I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for December 11th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody, and happy holidays. I hope you guys are ready. It's a great time of year, and I have to say with my work at the food pantry and down at the holiday tree lighting, you really get to see the best in people this time of year. It's really awesome. It makes me love this town even more. Today, our consent agenda includes approval of the November 13th, 2018 regular meeting and the November 27th, 2018 special meeting minutes, approval of the October bank balances, budget report for period ending 10/31/2018, approval of the October check register, legal costs on projects, and the department head monthly reports for November 2018. Our regular meeting agenda includes item number seven, which is a public hearing for Ordinance 1493 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter 12.24 pertaining to rights of way. Item number eight is Resolution 1153 declaring an emergency relative to water damage of the Gladstone Senior Center, authorizing emergency procurements to remediate the affected areas. Item number nine, Resolution 1152 adopting a revised master fee schedule, and item 10, appointments to city boards, committees, and commissions. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Present.
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Pledge of Allegiance) ...... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We did have an amendment to your city council agenda tonight. The first item I want to make sure that everyone knows you have now is item number eight, the resolution declaring an emergency relative to water damage at the Gladstone Senior Center. Our legal counsel prepared our resolution, and we'll go over that on item number eight. We'd also like to add item 9A, which is to amend Ordinance 1495 and Ordinance amending Chapter 210 of the Gladstone Municipal Code so that we can do our appointments to committee commissions and boards this evening. And also, you have an additional item, number 10B, where we received an application for Mindy Garland on the Budget Committee, and item 10, number D, we received an application for Andrew Levanti for the Parks Board.
All right, so we'll be inserting new item number 9A, amending Ordinance 1484, Exhibit A.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right, so the first thing is a presentation. Staff?
All right, well, we have a visitor this evening sitting in the front row here, so I would like to have Police Chief Jeff Jolly please come up front. And Lieutenant, do you want to grab this for me? And Ms. Brenda, if you could please come up as well? This is on behalf of the Gladstone Police Department and the City of Gladstone. Please just come up. So, most of you are aware that Police Chief Jeff Jolly took another police chief position in City of Monroe, Washington. We're very sad to see him go, but we understand this is a great new opportunity for him and his family. He actually started work there about a week ago. We asked him to come back tonight so that we could formally recognize him. So before I hand it over to the mayor, I wanted to make sure that I read this poem for the chief. (Laughter) (Music) The police chief badge. It is polished and shiny and looks so fine. Once you earn it, you have to toe the line. The minute you wear it upon your chest, it becomes a symbol that you are the best. It means honesty, integrity, and fairness to all. Your life is never your own, but at the public's call. Night or day, any hour, it makes you a mark, but it doesn't protect you from a shot in the dark. Over the years, the shine starts to fade, but brighter still is the man it's made. It is often what separates you from the crowd. It is a second family of which we are proud. So, I would like to say thank you for the two years that I got to spend with you and wish you the best of luck. And before you open your very nice gift, I believe the mayor would like to say something, but I don't know if all of you know that the chief is also in to being a master chef.[376.81][376.81](Laughter) My mother picked this out for you in your free time on how to smoke and spice up your barbecue.[384.12][384.12](Laughter) Mayor?
Okay. See if I can get through this. Jeff, so you decided to head north and go to Monroe, Washington. I'm sure this was a really tough decision for you and your family. I mean, after all, who would want to leave Gladstone? And I want to thank you for all that you've done for our city. The job hasn't been easy. There's been so many ups and downs. There's been huge brick walls in your way at every step, but you handled it with a grace that is so difficult to find. On behalf of the city, you will be missed, and we send you off with our best wishes. Excuse me, I knew that I was going to do this. On a personal note, we became friends the minute that you got here. I have valued your advice, sense of humor, and compassion at every step, and we were friends way before that mayor thing got in the way. When I became the mayor, our relationship had to change, but even with that elected official layer, you were and are still my friend. It was a seamless transition, and I have to say, I was put in here before I start crying, but that's already happened, that you are one of the biggest reasons that I've been able to sit here and do what needs to be done, because I knew that whatever decision we made, you would be there behind it to support it without question. Monroe is getting a great man. I'll miss you.
(Applause)
So, go ahead, we can...
No, go ahead.
No, you did this.
So, the people from the police department wanted to put something together for you, and they got it for you, so here you go. Well, thank you. Do I have to open it now?
Yes. Yes.
There's going to be a couple of things that probably you and I'll probably get to for one.[498.62][498.62](Laughter) Okay, half court's left.[502.12][502.12](Laughter) I've been looking. I've been looking for a time. As you know, Jeff, we had a department meeting, and Jeff had this hat that he used to wear. He was the only guy that wore a hat in the whole department.
Did you crush it?[519.29][519.29](Laughter)
And he threatened everybody to get a hat like that for everybody.[525.41][525.41](Laughter) And so, I stole it out of his office so that nobody would have to have a hat like this up in Monroe, and locked it in his box.[535.32][535.32](Laughter) And we have, as you know, Jeff was a sergeant when he came here, and then he was commuted to lieutenant, and then his uniform shirt was a chief's badge. This is kind of a joke. It's me and the two of us. We had this voodoo doll.[552.91][552.91](Laughter)
Can I have that? Me?[555.91][555.91](Laughter)
Jeff ever had a bad day, he'd go to his office and sit at his desk and pump this thing.[565.41][565.41](Laughter) So, I wanted to make sure that I got it in there. Thanks for being a friend and a great boss.[571.04][571.04](Applause)
I just want to say thank you. I stood up there hundreds of times and talked about how great Gladstone is, and I truly believe that, and it's been a difficult decision. It's something my wife and I, we thought we'd retire in East Snohomish, but we thought it'd be five to 10 years from now. I'm leaving the City of Gladstone and the citizens, the greatest men and women I've ever been honored to work with, and I truly mean that. I've worked nearly 30 years in the workforce, and I wouldn't trade these guys for anything. I wish I could bring them all with me, and hopefully I can recruit them or steal them.
No.[604.41][604.41](Laughter)
The community is the greatest community that I've been associated with, and if we can just let people do their jobs and plow forward and accomplish goals and take the citizens' will and work together in harmony and peace and not get in each other's way, I think the city will accomplish everything it possibly can, whether it's Mindy at the nature park or Bill or any of the people that we've worked with in the fire department that's done some great things. We have new members in the community like Bryce and old stalwarts like Bob that have done community things, and a community festival for years. And, yeah, we've got a great community, and it's a great vibe and a great thing, and the council works together and tries to get things done, and if we just keep that positive vibe, this community will continue to be one of the best communities in Portland metro area. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve under you and your leadership and your guidance, and I appreciate the tolerance and what you put up with me, and which has helped a lot. And I'm going to miss everybody, but I won't be a stranger, and thank you for the opportunity and the friendships and everything you've given me and my family. Thank you.[687.54][687.54](Applause)
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we start, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. I think the first, most important limitation is that as we sit here, we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been so many times when a decision being made does not align with what we feel personally, but we've made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, it's just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. These start at the federal and state level, filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is dispensable. I want you all to know, we appreciate you taking the time to come here and participate in this process. I would like all of you to respect the desire of others to hear what we are talking about, so if you could keep your side discussions to a minimum and as quietly as possible, that would be appreciated. And I'd also like to make sure everybody's phones are turned off. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging. I hope you all can help us do this. Thank you. First is business from the audience, so I want to make sure that everyone that had the opportunity to fill out the yellow card has done so. Do we have business from the audience?
I have not received any cards.
Oh, okay. So, I want to let everyone know that there's going to be a format change that will be implemented in January. We usually have general business from the audience in the beginning and hold council comment until the end of the meeting. I also allow public testimony during the individual agenda items, which I will continue to do. However, business from the audience will now be at the end of the meeting so that the city council members can immediately comment and do any follow-up that needs to be done. Hopefully, this is going to help the flow of the meeting, so we'll see how that goes. So, we have no business from the audience, so the first item is the consent agenda. Council, any discussion?
Mayor, seeing no discussion, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda items 1 through 6.
I'll second the motion.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Milch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence.
I have nothing, Mayor, Council.
All right, so then we move on to our regular agenda. Number seven, public hearing for Ordinance 1493 amending Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter 12.24 pertaining to the rights of way. Staff?
Hi.
Hello.
How are you guys this evening?
Good.
Excellent. Well, tonight, I am Reba, your Right-of-Way contract manager. Tonight, I brought you the updates to your municipal code for the Right-of-Way management. You adopted your code in 2016, and you adopted it so you could have efficient and effective management of your row, and you could be resilient and adaptive to changes in future laws and technology. Since 2016, when you adopted this code, you have not made any updates to it, so I brought you some updates to it because of the changes in technology and law. Most of the updates are housekeeping. It's nothing unusual or ordinary. Milwaukee is on the same thing, Tigard, Happy Valley, Oregon City, same languages, just little updates, little changes in laws. Honestly, I really think you're going to have updates at least yearly to this code, if not more often. As you know, the FCC is quite busy right now. They've got some orders pending. If those do take effect, you'll have to adapt to stay within federal law. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? David, any...
I'm sorry.
David, do you have any comment, any follow-up?
No, Mayor. Spencer Parsons in our office worked closely with Reba on this. There is, you know, a process that the FCC is going through right now regarding this small cell technology, and so, which is actually going to be appealed, most likely, by certain local government coalitions, but as of right now, that order that forms the basis for some of these changes is in place, and the majority of it will take effect after the New Year, so we wanted to get some of these changes put in your code.
Okay. I should say, too, that if that order does take effect on January 14th, if it does not successfully put aside, I would back before you on January 8th to update your code to fit the FCC order.
Okay. And you had a question?
Well, I wasn't sure if I asked it here or under number 9. Does the fees that we get from this, do they also pertain to the city enterprise funds? So, the sewer, the water, the stormwater? So, does the city pay Right-of-Way fees?
Well, these fees are very specific to telecom, not your... But you do charge 5% to, like, Lake Oswego Tri-Cities. Do you charge them to yourself?
I believe, Jim, yes, we do. The city does charge itself for those fees, the sewer, the water, the infrastructure that we are in. This ordinance is relating to telecommunications providers.
Right, so that's why I wasn't sure if I was getting ahead of myself.
But I'm glad you asked, because I was also going to ask you if you had questions relating to that item, because Reba will likely leave after this agenda item, so if there are questions regarding the master fee schedule, it's a good time for you to bring those up.
We did change the fee schedule. We moved it to its own special section for the Right-of-Way.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
To make it a little bit more clear to the providers.
Yeah. So, then, I don't know if you can answer this, maybe other staff. Do we pass those then on to our sewer, water, and users?
Should we discuss that under item number 9?
Well, I was just...
We can discuss that question related to the city's infrastructure under item 9.
Okay. Thanks to me.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Right, correct.
And excludes your water sewer.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, do we have any public testimony for this one?
I do not have any.
All right, then, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Milch and seconded by Counselor Reisner to close the public hearing for Resolution 1153. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Any further discussion? All right.
Just the only thing, Mayor, is Ordinance 1493.
Oh, I'm sorry.
1153 is the resolution for the Senior Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Ordinance 1493, excuse me.
So, we need a second reading.
Well, no.
This is the first reading.
We closed a first, right.
This is the first reading.
Mayor, I move the adoption of Ordinance number 1493 and Ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 12.24, Utility Services.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Milch, seconded by Counselor McMahon, amending Gladstone Municipal Code GMC, Chapter 12.24 pertaining to the rights of way, Ordinance 1493. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings closed. Any further discussion? All right.
Just the only thing, Mayor, is Ordinance 1493.
Oh, I'm sorry.
1153 is the resolution for the Senior Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Ordinance 1493, excuse me.
So, we need a second reading.
Well, no.
This is the first reading.
We closed a first, right.
This is the first reading.
Mayor, I move the adoption of Ordinance number 1493 and Ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 12.24, Utility Services.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Milch, seconded by Counselor McMahon, amending Gladstone Municipal Code GMC, Chapter 12.24 pertaining to the rights of way, Ordinance 1493. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, we need to do a roll call vote. Tammy, could you take... We don't need to do a roll call vote?
Okay, no, you can do it that way. That's fine. I was just going to plug in that since it was unanimous, you had the option of doing your second reading tonight as well.
Would you care to do that? Is that fine? Would you do the second reading for that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, why don't we make a motion to consider the second reading of Ordinance 1493? You can say so, moved.
Mayor, I'd like to make that second motion to approve Ordinance 1493 and Ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 12.24, Utility Services.
Do the second reading. Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Milch for the second reading of Ordinance 1493, amending Gladstone Municipal Code GMC, Chapter 12.24 pertaining to the rights of way.
And since Counselor McMahon actually read the ordinance's title, you can go ahead and vote on that.
All right, so should we do a roll call vote for this one, then?
Sure.
Tammy, could you please take a roll call vote?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
I love what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is eight, Resolution 1153, a resolution declaring an emergency relative to water damage of the Gladstone Senior Center, authorizing emergency procurements to remediate the affected areas. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff has kept you informed of an incident that occurred at the Senior Center on October 25th, where we had water damage coming in to the Senior Center, and we experienced a significant amount of water damage, where we had ServPro come out several times, and it penetrated holes in the roofs and the walls. So, you have been updated on that process. Paralleling that, the city is also getting the roof replaced at the Senior Center. That is a separate process. The roofer has until the end of December to complete that project. He has been on-site, and he is so far fulfilling his obligations in that contract. However, we're not currently able to operate out of the Senior Center. So, last week, I contacted David and asked if we can pass a resolution that would offer us some relief to go through the public contracting process in a more expedited manner. By you approving this resolution, it would authorize me, as the city administrator, to informally seek quotes for a contractor to come in and do the repair work at the Senior Center, and also, this is work that will be covered by CIF insurance providers. So, what we'd like you to do is to pass this resolution, therefore, I can get informal quotes, go ahead and award that contract, and so we can start remediating some of the issues and hopefully get our Senior Center back up and operational within the next couple of months. I also want to say that the Senior Center manager and I and the Public Works Director are working on an operations plan. We believe that the information we received last week in regard to the environmental assessment will not require us to close the Senior Center down, period. We should be able to use the east room in the next few weeks, however, we want to wait until Colin is back to work before we put that plan together. We really just need to isolate off the kitchen and the west room area while we have a contractor come in. We understand that it is a big inconvenience for our seniors that utilize the center, and we appreciate their patience. This resolution will provide us, again, some assistance to try to fix the issue in a more timely manner.
And it does state in here that you are going to get multiple bids?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we won't necessarily have to take the lowest bid, but we can take the one that's best going to fit our needs in the timely manner that we need to get up and operational.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes. You mentioned CIF. Are they just funding the cost of this, or do they have preferred providers of their own that you would be possibly seeking bids from? Is there any...
They could help us attract contractors to want to bid, but what we're going to find is that there's not a whole lot of available contractors right now, and so if I get two with an informal bid, but we can document that we tried to get three or four, then that would fulfill our obligation. But, yes, CIF has been very helpful in helping us get the restoration companies on-site and keeping the process moving forward.
Good, thank you.
Go.
Yeah. Well, as probably most everybody knows, I'm concerned about the use of the emergency clause, and... But understanding how important the Senior Center is to the community and obviously the seniors, I feel that we need to try to expedite and get things going. I'm disappointed that this whole thing happened in the first place, that better care wasn't taken to mitigate the weather, being we're in Oregon, and it rains once in a while.
And we have filed a claim on the bond for the contractor that is currently doing the work, and we are monitoring that very closely. And if it helps with easing your mind with declaring an emergency, we can read the wherethes into the record so people understand the reasons why, but this is also posted on the website as well.
No, I understand.
Are we doing something now to make sure that we don't have additional water damage? Because I know the holiday tree lighting, it flooded again.
Correct. The Public Works Director can provide you an update. I believe what he told... He was out there just before he came down there, and they are mitigating the roof matters as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Having worked at the Senior Center, I have to agree, this is... It's a huge burden on the seniors that have been there. They haven't been able to come in for almost a month and a half. We were delivering frozen meals for the last six weeks since the 1st of November. Yesterday, I think, was the first day that we delivered hot meals, and we're getting them from Oregon Cities, helping us out, and heating them and getting them in the packages so that we can deliver hot meals. So, we need this put together so that we can start moving forward. Two months, we're not going to have the kitchen done in two months, sorry. Reality is, it's probably going to be four months, and that's using this process to get everything started, because they have... It's going to be January before they're even going to be able to get into the kitchen, and it's going to be a two-to-three month process that our seniors have been unable to be in there. And in addition to just the meals, it's just a place for a lot of them to come three times a week and see all their friends, and they haven't been able to do that, so I wholeheartedly agree that we need to get this moving forward.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 1153, a resolution declaring an emergency relative to water damage in the Gladstone Senior Center and authorizing emergency procurements to remediate the affected areas. I'll say it.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next is number 9, Resolution 1152, adopting a revised master fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will have the Public Works Director come up to answer Counselor Reisner's question, but quickly, I wanted to just give you a brief overview. Typically, Gladstone likes to update its master fee schedule either at the end of December on the calendar year, and sometimes also at the end of our fiscal year in June. In the staff report, you can see the areas of which we are changing... but quickly I wanted to just give you a brief overview. Typically, Gladstone likes to update its master fee schedule either at the end of December on the calendar year and sometimes also at the end of our fiscal year in June. In the staff report, you can see the areas of which we are changing in regards to a revised water rate fee that was implemented or approved in the last budget cycle. We also have some right-of-way licensing changes that are on there. We had some policy changes this past year regarding business license fee changes that we have incorporated in there. And so with that, in your packet, you do have a strike-through highlighted version of the proposed changes. And Public Works Director, did you want to address the question regarding right-of-way fees to the city?
Yeah, I'll do my best. The way I understood the question was, does the city's utilities, so water, sewer, and storm, pay the right-of-way fee? And yes, they do. This is something that happened back in 16 when this rule was put into, or this resolution was done. And it's kind of a twofold. Every utility that's in the street, what they're paying for, this money goes to the street fund to repair the streets. So our water's in the streets, our sewer's in the streets, power, gas, all those that are in the street are helping pay to fix those. So that's kind of the reasoning behind it. And it's also fairness. It would be very, very difficult, if not challenged, if we did not do that. So, yeah. So our utilities pay the exact same. Yep. It's a 5%.
That on to?
Remember when we passed that resolution in 16, I believe it is 97% of those funds, it's like 96.5 or right in there, go directly to the street fund.
Right. No, what I'm saying is, the city passes that on to the end user, you know, like for, to me as a, you know?
Ratepayer.
Ratepayer.
It is incorporated in the rates, absolutely.
Right, okay.
Yeah. I mean, so they're an enterprise fund, so that's where those funds come from.
Sure. Thank you.
So a quick question on, in the packet, we're talking about a 3% increase on the row. Is that just city-specific or are we talking about a 3% increase for all utilities including telecom?
Oh, across the board.
Okay. So you do a 3% increase annually for everything that's in the right-of-way, whether it's a city utility or otherwise?
Yeah. And as you guys all were, that's just to keep flat. I mean, that's inflation. Actually, inflation's on more than, so that's what the idea of that is, is to stay, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Would someone make a motion, please?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 1152. You guys are gonna make me do all these?
Yep.
A resolution repealing the master fee schedule adopted under Resolution Number 1143 and adopting a new master fee schedule.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Mills?
Regarding the water rates and the changes effective January 1st, 2019, I've been following some social media conversation about this issue and a lot of people are concerned that the minimum charge we have is based on usage of 600 cubic feet, cubic feet of water per month. And a lot of people say that their typical usage is more like three units rather than six and so it doesn't provide to them much incentive to conserve water when they're gonna be charged the same if they use three units as they do if they use six units. So I would hope that at some point in the future, perhaps in conjunction with sewer rate study that we'll take a little more in-depth look at in February, we might want to consider the viability of changing the minimum usage amount to a lower number and then have it based on that. With climate change and everything, you know, it seems to be moving farther and farther north the drought years and at some point, we may really want to have been the kind of a community that encouraged conservation of water and a rate structure that doesn't encourage it may not be, put us in that place. So I hope, I won't be on the council in February, but I hope that the council will give consideration to that at that time. I'm not gonna propose doing it tonight. I know we've already worked through these numbers and it'll take a little more work. But do you have any?
I would love to speak on that just a little bit.
Yes, sure.
Having been in the water industry for so long.
Okay.
And it's kind, it's, that's a pretty common billing process here locally and there's a couple of reasons for that. The way most cities come up with that, summer it's six, summer it's seven, summer it's five. So you get, your minimum bill includes so much water. And for one, it's a more stable revenue source. So if you go with a, and you can do that, it's actually a pretty sought-after nowadays is a more block rate where it's a conservation rate where you basically, you charge a rate for the meter and all the maintenance and that's your base and then you get charged for every bit of water. So it's a block rate, basically. But the way they did it in the past is they needed a more stable income, so they go, okay, what's the average home use? And that's usually what drove that for Gladstone, it would've been six units, that's what the average. So nobody's seen a change in their bill unless you use more than that and then your bill would increase. But I agree with you and I understand exactly what you're saying as far as someone using three units but getting charged for six, what's the incentive? Fix that drippy faucet or, you know, just let the water run when you brush your teeth and all that stuff that we learned to conserve water. So if we want to look at that, we would need to do a more in-depth rate study on our water, which we already have a water rate study done, but it didn't look at doing that. So it would have to massage the rates around so that you're not going backwards in a sense.
Right.
And I don't know what that would look like, but we could absolutely do that.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Tracy?
So what I'm hearing from you though is that we could go back and look at the average to Counselor Mills' point, if you do have the conservation efforts in the city, then the averaging should probably go down. Is that not correct?
Yes. And I'm actually looking at that right now because our sewer rates on the north side of town go into Oak Lodge Water Services based on our average winter water usage.
Okay.
So I'm kind of looking at that now and the little bit I've looked at, I don't think it's changed a lot for our average winter usage.
Okay.
But that is taking the average of the whole city, not homes versus businesses versus apartments and stuff like that.
But once you look, go, I'm sorry.
So you'd have to do a more in-depth look if you wanted to look at just residential. I don't have the data laid out that.
I had one other comment if I might. So as we're looking at restructuring, I read all of the staff reports. I'm not sure how you do this, how you write these staff reports without interjecting, not at, well, you interject a little comedy this time. But, you know, Director, why not, you're chasing pipage, you're chasing, you know, conveyance, you're chasing everything through these streets. You've got one photograph in this staff report and I'd like the citizens to take a look at it and go online and see your staff reports where you actually have a snaked water line that actually went across the street, which was a main feed or off the main feed, it was a service line to a house.
Yes.
So can you, at some point in time, and I'm not asking directly right now, we should probably estimate what the cost is when you go to someplace and you expect it to be to code?
Yes.
And you expect it to be to at least professional standard and spec and you're chasing it, we should figure out what those costs are. Because to me, it seems like what has happened in the past is determining and driving whatever our costs are going forward, whether, I mean, you don't open up these streets all the time to do this unless you're fixing a water main break or something, correct?
Yeah. No, absolutely. And for example, just this week up on Claritin, we've had a four-inch water mine line break and it wasn't even surfacing. It actually broke and punctured a hole in an old abandoned sewer line that was still connected to the main.
So it was just during the sewer system?
And so we're pumping treated water into town, we're pumping, we're squirting it right into a sewer main, sending it over to get treated over to the sewer treatment plant.
Okay.
And it was insane. We had to go out there and it took two days because it was not, just like what you said. And you'll see that in next month's monthly report because it's just crazy. Pipes going in every direction and we had to use a vacuum truck to even excavate it.
And I was out at a water main break where you guys had high voltage lines and gas lines laid over water mains that those lines weren't supposed to be.
Yeah. We can't even dig those.
We had other utilities come into our city, basically, and just do whatever they wanted to and the question to the, you know, citizens are questioning costs.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that it's important that we show them what you're dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah. And we try to capture that without getting too crazy, but our monthly reports that are on our website, you can go to Public Works' website and they're all listed there.
And we know we have Beavers and Meldrum Bar.
Yeah. No, it's, we're not, utilities aren't the only issue, but.
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you. Next item is our new number nine, A, amend ordinance 1484, Exhibit A, an ordinance adopting new code chapters governing the establishment of and appointment to boards, commissions, and committees and repealing all prior coded administrative provisions regarding the same and declaring an emergency. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, last year, a year ago, we did a very comprehensive review of our boards, commissions, and committees' responsibilities. We also did a comprehensive review of the city council rules. You adopted a new ordinance, you adopted a new resolution. Thank you, Counselor Mills, for bringing to our attention two inconsistencies. And in order for us to move forward tonight with the appointments of those volunteers to our boards, committees, and commissions, we would like the council to consider making amendments to the ordinance. I'd like to say this doesn't affect the library board. We should have been recruiting for seven members. That was the standardized format for all of our committees except audit and we only recruited for five. Therefore, tonight, you will see an amended agenda where we actually have three opening positions on the library board and we will get to that in a moment. It doesn't require an amendment to this ordinance to do it. David prepared this ordinance and what you can see on this is basically on item number 10, it says individuals may not be appointed to more than two boards, commissions, or committees at one time. If an individual is serving on more than one board, commission, or committee, they may not serve as the chair of both. Your council rule states the same thing, but there's one more sentence in there that says this limitation does not apply to service on the city budget committee. That was inadvertently not placed into the ordinance and so we're asking the council to include or add that sentence into item, section number 10. Section 11 in the current ordinance says no more than one individual from a household may be appointed to serve on a specific board, commission, or committee at one time. We would like the council to consider to remove that item from the ordinance. Otherwise, we will have to make some changes to two members that are currently on the city's budget committee that reside at the same residence. So we have a simplified ordinance amendment here for you to consider those two changes. We did not make it as an emergency declaration because I understand we like to reserve those for real emergencies, but you do have a choice. You can just amend it tonight and then we, if it's approved by two readings, it would go into effect on January 11th. Or if it's not approved tonight, we carry it over to January 8th. Or if you want to declare it an emergency tonight, it can go into effect tonight. And those are your options.
I actually have one other option. I didn't get a chance to talk with Jackie about this, but reading through your charter, there's even one, a bit more flexibility. And so this is in chapter, section 36, rather, when ordinances take effect. And it's very short, so I'll just read it. An ordinance enacted by, I just gotta get my glasses, sorry, I had my eyes dilated today so I can't really read that well. An ordinance enacted by the council shall take effect on the 30th day after its enactment. So that's if you do nothing and say nothing and the ordinance is in effect 30 days. When the council deems it advisable, however, an ordinance may provide a different time for it to take effect and in case of an emergency, it may take effect immediately. So I think you'd also have the ability, if you weren't comfortable, you know, as far as the emergency issue goes, as Jackie mentioned, to identify a different time in the ordinance where it would take effect. It could be shorter than 30 days. And that way, you know, if you had it effective, if you, if that matters, you could have it effective, you know, a week from now. You could also set the, I'm not sure when the appointment.
January 1st, it could be in effect.
Right, because that's when the.
That's when the new appointment's going to affect.
That would be a way to do it as well. And that way you'd have the appointments be effective at the same time the ordinance would be effective.
But these were already things that we had decided on and agreed to a long time ago, right? It's just, this is housekeeping, this is just, right?
The rules resolution said one thing.
Okay.
Remember, there were two different committees working on two different things. Both of them had language related to committees, boards, and commissions of the city. But the committee that was working strictly on committee process, I believe they added or, which is the one, they're the ones that did not have the rule allowing people to, exempting budget committee from the two-board limit. But they are the ones who added the rule not permitting two people from the same household. I was not on that subcommittee, so I don't know what the discussion was. And I don't know if anybody, I can remember there were prominent families in the community who had two members of the same family on one major commission in the city at one time and perhaps someone on that committee was not happy with that situation, that could have been the reason for it. But I don't see a reason. I think if a husband and wife or partners are motivated to do work and have similar interests, I think they ought to be permitted to work on the same committee.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
I might suggest you first decide just the substance of the ordinance itself, if anybody has concerns about that. And if there are some, then talk that through. Assuming there aren't any, then maybe have a discussion about, you know, before you have a motion, about when do you want it to take effect.
All right. Discussion?
Well, I was on the same committee as Councilor Mills. So, but after, and we were doing the rules and then we came together, you know, in a work session and as you mentioned, hammered out.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have a problem with adding the one sentence to paragraph 10 in regards to the budget committee, but I do disagree with taking out 11 because there was quite a bit of discussion in regards to having two family members on the same committee and the influence that had, at least in a couple of committees over the last few years, created in the committees, at least one in particular that I remember.
I believe that is accurate in the conversation. The only thing is if we have two people at the same address, but they're not related, that's something to consider too. We're trying to figure out, it's not just family members, because two people could live at the same household and not be married or related and I think that's kind of the issue that we're faced with right now with two members. But it is a policy decision on what the council wants to do. We just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Counselor Mills, how do you feel about that? Leaving?
No, I'm in favor of both changes. I wanted the consistency to be there.
Okay.
Particularly since it affects people currently serving. We have at least one individual, I think, who serves on two committees plus the budget committee and I'd like that person to be able to continue to do that. And it only came, you know, only by looking at the names and address list or some other reason that I discovered that two people on the budget committee were in the same household. And, but I see no, I've not had enough experience to know whatever problems may have arisen from that situation in the past, so I can't speak to it from experience, but I'm in favor of keeping.
Both of them?
Of keeping both, yes.
Counselor Neese?
I have to think about it a little more. I didn't realize we were having an issue with two people, so I would think.
Just on the one, just on the budget committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Tracy?
I see no reason to keep anyone who wants to serve the city from doing so, but I think that again, if there's a dynamic, I'm not aware of it, so it's outside of my purview as well.
Counselor Mercero?
I went through the redline version and it is kind of confusing because it's going back and forth and around and about, but everything to me made sense the way it was. And I think it's pretty much been talked about over the past and talked about and talked about.
Untalked about and talked about, yeah.
So I've got no problem with the way it is.
Counselor McMahon?
I'd be all right with making the changes, adding the 10 or changing the 10 and deleting the 11.
Can I make one other comment?
Yes.
In regards to 11, where, you know, I say that it just specifies on the same board, commission or committee. It wouldn't prevent two people from the same household being involved in city affairs, being like on a planning commission in the library board or-
No.
Or parks and traffic.
Right, on the same.
So, I don't think we're excluding anybody from participating in volunteering for the city.
It's hard to get volunteers, that's the problem. Well, we need to make a decision on how we want to move forward with this. It sounds like the majority are okay with deleting item 11. Back to you councillor Neath.
That's fine.
Okay, so that's the majority. So, it sounds like that's what we're looking at, is the changes as they're shown. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we were just-
Okay.
Seeing if there was a majority. But it sounds like, if I-
Yeah.
Understand councillor Reisner-
Is the only one.
Okay.
So, then we need to decide how we want to vote on it. Do we want to do it as a standard ordinance with a first and second reading? Do we want to, I don't know, what was the last one that you said that would be not an emergency, but it's a-
Setting a, setting a, basically, a date certain.
Date certain.
And it could be less than 30 days. Recognize that if you, you know, you only get to do two readings in one meeting-
And it has to be-
If it's a unanimous-
Right. So, this would not-
So, you'd still be looking at a, I mean, councillor Reisner, nobody's voted yet.
Right.
But assuming that's the way it went, then you'd still be looking at having a second reading-
Right.
At a subsequent meeting.
Okay, but as an emergency, we would not need to do a second reading?
You still would have to, you'd have to have two readings to adopt any ordinance. The emergency just relates to when it's effective.
Okay, so either way, it's two readings.
You could set the date to January-
January 1st.
8th or 9th.
Oh.
And your second reading would be at Jan, and we're being presumptuous here, but-
Yeah.
Second reading would be January 8th and it would go into effect January 8th.
Okay. Lots of choices. All right.
This isn't going to affect who we nominate or vote for any of the boards tonight, is that correct?
No, it is.
Mm-hmm. In particular-
Budget, I think, no.
Budget.
Budget.
Mindy Garlandton currently serves on the audit committee and the parks board and the budget committee. And she's applied to return to the budget committee. So, she was allowed to serve on all three in the past because we followed the procedure that excluded the budget committee from counting against your two. But in order to keep her on all three of those, we would need to abide by this new-
The change to 10.
And you could appoint Mindy at January 8th, or January 8th meeting as well when it goes into effect.
Do you know if the budget committee is expected, has a meeting scheduled any time-
We're coming to council February 12th with the calendar, so it will be after that date.
Okay, so it's not, that one's not so urgent thing.
So, you could still make the appointments.
Except for Mindy.
Right, except for Mindy.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And, because none of the other ones, as I understand, would be affected by this change.
In terms of the new appointments tonight, no.
Okay, so how would you guys like to proceed? Do the first reading now and the second reading at the January 8th meeting? Do we want to do that?
Well, I think we do the first reading and then see if we get to do a second reading tonight.
Well, I'm just assuming that we're getting the second reading on January 8th.
So, just to be clear, and I can read this into the record, but we would be changing section 3 to have the ordinance effective on January 8, 2019.
Yes. All right.
Well, I hate to be the party pooper. Mayor, I'd like to approve that we approve ordinance 1495, an ordinance amending chapter 2.10 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. And I didn't catch the effective date. Do we want just December 31, 2018?
January 8, 2019.
January 8, 2019. And actually, it's 2019. I read somewhere, I'm not supposed to say 2000.
I second the motion.
Motion was made by councillor McMahon and seconded by councillor Milch. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Milch?
Yes.
Councillor Neath?
Yes.
Councillor Tracy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisner?
Yes.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
You almost gave her a heart attack.
You did. Man, I was not expecting that. All right, so we'll go ahead and do the second reading now, then.
Mayor?
Yes, councillor Milch?
I knew.
I was going to suggest that we amend it back to making it immediately on the second reading.
That would be requiring an emergency declaration.
Yeah.
So, you'd need to discuss whether that is something you're comfortable doing.
I think if we just hold it off until January 8th.
It's gonna work, January, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can read the-
Yes, please.
I'll make the second reading. Ordinance number 14, man.
Get the glasses on.
I've been there. It's crazy. 1495, an ordinance amending chapter 2.10 of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote again?
Councillor Milch?
Yes.
Councillor Neath?
Yes.
Councillor Tracy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisner?
Yes.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. Ordinance 1495 is passed. All right, next is the appointment to city boards, committees and commissions. It looks like audit committee, we have one position open. Budget, we have three positions. Library advisory board, we now have three positions. Park and rec, we have one position. Planning, we have one position. Senior center advisory board, we have two positions. And traffic safety, we have one. So, how would you like to handle this?
Thank you, mayor and council. We are going to go through these individually and the city recorder will place an Excel sheet up on the screen. First of all, since everyone's here tonight, I want them to know that January 30th, we will have our volunteer orientation at 5:30 PM right here in this room. You will get a formal invitation, but I wanted to let everyone know that once you're appointed, you're going to say, "What now?", and we will have an orientation at the end of January. So, the first item you have is the audit committee. And I believe that the city recorder will ask each individual councillor and the mayor on yes or no, or name who they would like, starting with the mayor.
First, the audit committee, and we have one applicant. That is Steve Johnson. And I will go through and ask each how you vote. Mayor Stempel?
I vote no. I'm not going to support the appointment of Steve Johnson at this time to any position. He has verbally attacked staff, Gladstone elected officials, appointed volunteers and regional officials. I do not support anyone who does not believe in negotiation, compromise or consensus. And I think it would be unfair and unkind to have staff and other volunteers subjected to that type of behavior. So, I would like this position left open and advertised for additional candidates.
Councillor Milch?
Johnson.
Is that a yes or no?
That's a yes.
I'm going to go ahead and say yes on Steve Johnson. And it's not because I have any personal affiliation and people can think what they want. He is a citizen of Gladstone. We've all made mistakes, we need to learn from them. And let's hope that this will be the end of bickering and fighting and demeaning to everyone. So, I will say yes.
Councillor Tracy?
No.
Councillor Reisner?
No.
Councillor McMahon?
No.
Councillor Mercero?
Steve Johnson.
That's a yes?
Yes.
So, may I have a process question?
Yes.
So, do we have deadlines for these applications for these positions?
Yes. And tonight, you received two on your dais that we read into the record. Those are the two that came in after the deadline. One was for the budget committee and the other was for the parks and board.
Second question, the process question, are we going to decide as a body to honor or not honor the deadlines? I guess I should be asking you.
Yeah, no, that was actually something that I talked to Jackie about earlier, where I think when we're done with this piece is I want it to be clear that we need to receive those applications when we receive our packet, that the last minute is not going to happen. We need to have time to review the application. So, we need to set-
So, my question, I guess, for tonight is that we need to level the playing field. So, I mean, basically, now, we're going to accept applications beyond the deadline. So, we, I believe, we need to, as a body, say right now that we'll accept the applications that were brought to us late and say that this is the level playing field. Is it not? Because it's-
I think-
We ran into this before.
Correct, you are correct. I think now you need to decide whether or not you want to accept late applications for, because you're going to the budget committee and the parks board, or if not. And then, after you've done the appointments, you can decide whether or not you want to accept them. So, that decision needs to be made now before you do the budget committee.
How late did these come in? Both should be-
Was it one day or?
They both are date stamped?
I think we need to accept them this time, but we need to set a standard moving forward.
Or, you know, have the deadline at the, I mean, basically at the meeting, which I don't agree with. I don't think that's when the deadline should happen, but-
No.
We've done this before. I just was trying to make sure we're going to all say together that we're-
It's really up to council if you want to accept ones that are in after the deadline or not.
I'm fine with accepting them. I just want us to make sure we're-
Yeah, I'm fine, but I just want to make sure we have a policy moving forward so there's no confusion.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, next is the budget committee.
Budget committee, we received two applications. One is for Steve Johnson and one is for Mindy Garlandton, and there are three vacant positions.
And I think that we cannot appoint Mindy until the January 8th meeting.
Okay.
So, we're just looking at Steve Johnson at this point?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
No, for the reasons I already stated.
Councillor Milch?
No.
Councillor Neath?
No.
Councillor Tracy?
No.
Councillor Reisner?
No.
Councillor McMahon?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Mercero?
Yes.
Okay, next is the library advisory board. And I believe we have one councillor that will refuse?
Yes.
We've received two applications, one from Michael, Michael Milch and Natalie, and the other is from Natalie Smith. We have three positions available. Mayor Stempel?
Yes for Milch and yes for Smith.
Councillor Neath?
Yes for Michael Milch and Natalie Smith.
Councillor Tracy?
Yes for Michael Milch, yes for Natalie Smith.
Councillor Reisner?
Yes for both.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes for both.
Councillor Mercero?
Yes for both.
And councillor Milch, if you wanted to, just for the record, you are free to vote for Ms. Smith. It's up to you entirely.
Oh, yes, I will vote for Natalie Smith, yes.
Probably don't want to say no now.
It was easier when you opened it up to three positions rather than one.
Okay, next is park and recreation advisory board. And if you are accepting late applications, then you will have three applications for one position.
Three applicants are Colson, Proctor and Labonte. We have one position. If each would determine which you're voting for. Mayor Stempel?
I support Dr. Bryce Colson. I love his energy, his vision, his compassion. I've had some issues with some members not showing up for the meetings and not letting anybody know that they're not showing up. And I know that he would be 100% committed.
Councillor Milch?
I believe Kelsey Proctor has been a very excellent chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Board for the period that I've been a liaison there. As much as I appreciate that we have interest from other members of the community, I would like to keep her on as chair. So, I vote for Proctor.
Councillor Neath?
Kelsey Proctor.
Councillor Tracy?
Kelsey Proctor.
Councillor Reisner?
Kelsey Proctor also.
Councillor McMahon?
Kelsey Proctor.
Councillor Mercero?
Kelsey Proctor.
May I say one thing?
Uh-huh.
I think this is the kind of a committee that is seeking to involve members of the community in the work it does. So, I hope that the committee will, you know, make a note of the names of the people that have applied to be a part of it and work at ways of involving them in their work. It's more than a seven-member board can do and additional volunteer help would be greatly appreciated, I think.
Your next one is the planning commission. You have four applications for one position.
Mayor Stempel?
I support Michael Milch. I know beyond the shadow of a doubt that he would show up for every meeting, thoroughly reviewing the material, having researched all and every option. And I think he is exactly what we need to move the planning commission forward, especially with this, a lot of issues facing us soon. We need to be ahead of them instead of behind them.
Councillor Neath?
This one was a toughie for me. I'm going to support Michael Milch.
Councillor Tracy?
I'm going to go ahead and support Les Poole.
Councillor Reisner?
I'm going to support Claire Coy.
Councillor McMahon?
Michael Milch.
Councillor Mercero?
Les Poole.
Can we go- Go back?
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to make that-
So, there were how many?
Three for Milch.
Three for Michael Milch, two for Les Poole and one for Claire Coy.
Yep.
Michael Milch.
Michael Milch.
Well, it's not a majority.
You didn't vote, how many people, uh, that's a good point. There was, so I think what we need to do then is take, what I would recommend is take the top two, Milch and Poole, and have six of you vote on those, see if we can get a majority.
Okay, so, the second vote. Mayor Stempel?
Michael Milch.
Councillor Neath?
I'm going to go with Les. I'm going to switch. And I'm doing it because of consistency and I- And I'm doing it because of consistency and, and I, and Michael would be a good one too. Les has been on there for quite some time, and he would, I know he's missed three meetings, and it all had to do with personal matters, and he had family issues.
Counselor Tracy?
Previous votes stamped.
Counselor Reisner?
Um, Michael Milch.
Counselor McMahon?
Michael Milch.
Les Poole.
So, you can draw lots, unsatisfying as that might be. You could wait to make the appointment until you have a new counsel. Try to persuade somebody to change their vote? That's another option.
So, Mayor, if I might, this doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like a real thumbs-up, thumbs-down. I think we have folks who want to volunteer. We should probably have more of a discussion about this particular role. I would say moving it to the new council would be a good idea.
I think so too.
And part of the reason is it gives us the opportunity to explore some more options about folks getting involved and how, and in what role. Maybe you agree, maybe disagree, Mayor, but I think we could open up the books a little bit and get some folks in there.
Yep, no, I agree. Could we hold this open until January 8th then?
Yes.
For just the two, are you going to reopen all the positions for every, for anybody else to apply to this position?
Yeah, because we might get somebody else for the Audit Committee, so, get another applicant.
Well, we need to fill that space as well, or that sheet as well, right?
Exactly.
So, we're going to have to come back for the Audit Committee.
We are going to continue to advertise for the vacant positions that you have not filled tonight. Okay, then that'll just stay open. The question is, do you want to keep the Planning Commission closed and just vote on it again January 8th? Or do you want to reopen it for more applications? I think we should leave it open. Reopen it.
Closed.
We may want to have a motion just to make it-
Hey, yeah.
I make a motion that we leave the, the vote for the Planning Commission open.
Open?
Yes.
Keep it open. I thought you said closed, I'm sorry.
I'm going to vote that way, yes, but-
Oh, okay, that's your motion. My apologies.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Reisner, to keep the Planning Commission vacant position open. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. To keep it open? So, that would mean we're accepting- Additional applications, yes. I say yes. And everybody else says no?
No, yes, I'm with you.
You're with me, okay.
Do you want me to do a roll?
All those in favor of keeping the Planning Commission vacant positions open for additional applications? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. So, we have two opposed and five for, so we will keep it open until January 8th.
I like the roster that we had already, but, okay, thank you.
Just for clarity now, do you want, that means you're going to accept applications all the way up to the council meeting that night?
That's what we will be discussing after we're done with this, because I think we need to set-
A deadline?
A deadline.
Okay. Your next committee is the Senior Center Advisory Board. There is two applications for two positions.
And I will not be voting on this one, though I can, but my father's one of the applicants.
Counselor Milch?
Uh, McMullen and Nelson.
Counselor Neese?
McMullen.
Counselor Tracy?
Both.
Counselor Reisner?
Both.
Counselor McMahon?
Both.
Counselor Mercero?
Both.
Okay, and the last one is Traffic Safety Advisory Board, two applications for one position.
Mayor Stempel?
Ken Moore.
Counselor Milch?
Ken Moore.
Counselor Neese? Ken Moore. Counselor Tracy?
Uh, Mr. Moore.
Counselor Reisner?
I really want you to know that I'm voting for Ken Moore, but he has done so much over the years. He's now volunteering to put out the radar trailer, and he's spent countless hours over the last three years studying traffic speeds and, because we were talking about maybe getting a radar trailer, or radar van like what Milwaukee added, just like, and it didn't pan out, but he has spent hundreds of hours volunteering, and his wealth of knowledge has really helped the traffic safety, so let's see, Ken Moore.
Counselor McMahon?
Ken Moore.
Counselor Mercero?
Ken Moore.
All right, okay. So, we are going to continue to advertise for audit and the library, or, yeah, library and the budget. So far, we are going to come back January 8th and reconsider the Planning Commission and consider appointing Mindy Garlandon to the Budget Committee. So, all I need clarity on now is a deadline for the applications. I would like the deadline to be the day that we get our packets, okay? So that we have ample time to review the applications instead of just hours. And I think for staff, it makes sense to have those prior to packets.
Well, I think, well, clarification, if I may-
The day before the packets.
We, yeah, we talked about, I thought it was like Monday or Tuesday, whenever, yeah, the week before, which would give staff time to put this all together.
Does anybody have a calendar? Handy?
If our meeting is January 8th, if your meeting is January 8th, a week before that is January 1st, which will be a city holiday. The packets would probably be prepared on January 2nd, but I shouldn't speak for the recorder.
The January 3rd is when the packets will be.
So, January 2nd. January 2nd, I think, works. Is that all right for you guys, January 2nd?
Mm-hmm.
And I think instead of picking a date, we're just picking, as it is always, they are in the week that the packet comes out, instead of saying-
Currently, it's the Monday before packets, or before the council meeting.
That would be perfect.
That's what I would advocate for.
Yeah, we want to make it easy for you guys. Counselor Tracy?
Yeah.
So, we've had deadlines before, are we going to, I guess the question-
We are following them now.
Are we following the deadline?
Yes, we are following them now.
Wonderful. Just looking for-
Will, will the city offices be open on December 31st?
Yes.
Okay. That is the Monday prior to the-
Right.
Okay.
Correct. I think the difficulty always is that we have a deadline, but then when you also have vacant positions, it's hard not to want to take those applications, but we can certainly hold that line on the deadline date. Yeah, we need to, for you guys' sake. You know, staff needs time.
And I think then, let's say we only get, let's say, one or two applications for a board that has three openings, we can hold off and say, okay, we're going to, you know, hold these and then give another month.
Another month, yeah.
And not make any appointments.
Yeah, we can do that, but, no, we need a deadline. All right, we're done with that one. So, the next item is presentation to City Councilor Pat McMahon and City Councilor Michael Milch. Did you want to say something, you want me to?
No, I believe this is your, you got what you need, there you go.
I do, in my secret drawer. So, we have these beautiful plaques for Counselor Michael Milch, expressing our sincere appreciation for everything that you've done, and then for Counselor Pat McMahon.
To Brandon Carr. So, I would like to thank you both for serving in sometimes, in a sometimes thankless, always
unpaid, stressful and demanding position for the benefit of our city. Elected officials tend to fall into two camps. The ones that are elected and perceive they have powers, have some power, so they become powerful. The other are the ones that, once elected, realize how much responsibility they now have and are humbled. You both fall into that second and most valued category. Michael, I have, I have so much respect for you, and I wish I had the opportunity to serve with you longer. You truly value what makes our city great and have always pursued what is best without any hidden agenda. And Pat, I've known you for a long time, and I miss the friendship we had before politics got in the way. You have served a long time, and you've always put the city first, and we appreciate it. Hopefully, now that you're not going to be on council, we can go have a beer or something. Both of you, please stay involved, because the city would lose so much if you didn't. So, thank you. Does, would anybody else like to say something?
It's been great. Going to miss you. I enjoyed you being with me.
Yeah, but you're not off the hook yet. Would you guys, would, Counselor Milch, would you like to say something?
Well, I would like to say that I, I knew Pat McMahon before he was on the city council, before I was even living in the city, and he, his interest in the city, his volunteer work certainly was one of the inspirations for me to get started. So, I will, I will miss working with you in this capacity too, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I've learned so much from the two of you over the last year and a half, and really appreciate some of the schooling I got from Counselor McMahon, when you were giving me good sage advice, I appreciate that, and, and Mr. Milch, I love a researcher and coming with the information. It was great to sit there at times when I knew what you were going to say based on the research I would have done but didn't have the time at the time, so appreciate that. And thank you very much for letting me serve with you, because it was great. I appreciate it.
Same here. I really appreciated the fact that you did your homework, and it was obvious from the questions you asked and the information you gave out, and it's not going to be the same in the future about you on my left. Been an interesting four years.
Oh, no, we're going to have a good replacement.
I, I, I agree. So, thank you.
I'd like to stand to both of them and thank them both for all the help that we've gotten in a fairly short time from Counselor Milch, but you've been around for a while. Thanks a lot.
Um, next, business carried forward. Thank you. I have one item that I'd like to update the council on, and I have done so via email, but publicly I'd like to talk a little bit about the proposed warming shelter at the Hillside Church. There is no proposal, so I'll make that clear. After the last city council meeting, we set up a meeting with the pastor of the church, various members from his church, Clackamas County building officials, planning director, our senior planner, the police chief, the fire chief, the fire marshal, and myself, and we sat down and we talked through what went wrong and what could we do better. Most importantly, I want everyone to understand that the pastor had no intentions on creating the debacle that occurred. He didn't understand that there was a conditional use permit process. We could have communicated that better to him. Currently, he has not decided whether or not he wants to go forward with making that a warming center, but he does understand that if he does, there is a land use process that he will have to go through, whereas the neighboring community will be invited to provide public comment. I know the church is actively assisting another facility outside of Clackamas County. They could be storing items at their church. They are currently not a warming center, and they have no plans to do so. There's a lot of traffic in the community. They are a church, they, they are allowed to have people coming and going and providing a service, but I just wanted to reassure the city council and the community that the, the pastor very much does care about citizen input in the community, and now that they understand what the process is, the county and city will help them in the future if they decide to move forward. Thank you. Just to make sure we're kept in the loop on this one. Yes. All right, any other business carried forward? No, thank you. All right, business from the council. Counselor Milch?
Um, nothing more, thank you.
Counselor Neese?
Nothing.
Counselor Tracy?
Nothing.
Counselor Reisner?
So, a couple of things. Recently, it came to my attention that we renewed our service contract with civil engineering, and having been around for a few years, I didn't remember if, that we had done a request for qualification when they were appointed the first time. And talking with Public Works Director, why not, he wasn't, wasn't sure. So, I want to bring it forward and ask that if there hasn't been, I don't think there has been for at least 10 years, that we ask staff to initiate a request for qualifications for a city engineer.
Is that something we can put on an agenda in January possibly? I think it's excellent time to talk about that and also legal services. I understand that, that there has been a desire for that, and under your charter, the judge, the city administrator, and the city attorney are under your purview. It's no secret, we know that we have not looked into the attorney one for several years. So, I do think the city engineer and the city attorney should both be suggestions that come during the strategic planning session at the 25th. Perfect. And, and that's a great time to bring that up. Okay, perfect. Will that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And just want to wish everybody a safe and holidays, Merry Christmas, have an awesome New Year. We'll see you on the 8th.
Counselor McMahon?
I have a couple of things. When I ran four years ago, I ran to get a civic building. The previous councils could not seem to, they could not seem to vote and get a new building built, so I guess that's one of my greatest accomplishments, I think, is being part of a team that's going to get a new city hall and a new police station built. So, for my four years and a lot of ups and downs, that's probably the thing that I'm, one of the things I'm most proud of. Ranerson Pond, when that first came to me three years ago, I just thought, oh, this is pie in the sky, there's no way that this is ever going to go, and it's done. They haven't sold anything yet, the city hasn't seen any monetary back yet, but they've done a phenomenal job in there, and if we don't get a penny out of it, they did us a huge favor by taking care of a, a potential liability for the city in the long run. I'm probably most proud, I think, of the, the employees that have been hired over the last four years that I've been here. That is what is going to drive this city forward to continue making improvements. Jim, why not? Whenever I read your, your, just like Counselor Tracy, when I read those, I, I'm just amazed at what went on for 40 years as far as how they did a lot of things. I'm still amazed that we, the city 40 years ago, would run main water lines between houses just to get to a cul-de-sac, instead of making the builder keep it in the right-of-way all the way around. I get it, it's another 600, 800 feet, but in 40 years, when that line finally breaks and the tree that they planted there that was very sentimental to them for some reason, and they, you now get to dig that out, it just, it amazes me to look at some of the, where the sewer lines, the water lines, all are running. And I, and I think just the, the employees are what make this, make this whole city go, and I think that's probably my proudest thing for, for my four years here. And then I, also just a little comment, I think, I also want to make sure, and I already told this to the Chief of Police, that I was very proud that he got the job that he did, and I was very disappointed that- did, and I was very disappointed that some counselor, on his own, I believe, made comments to his new employer that was probably uncalled for, but nonetheless, he did get his new job, and we will get another great employee, so that's probably one of the things that I'm most proud of, so thank you very much, and let's get a new building built.
Counselor Mercero?
I've got nothing, other than wishing everybody in the city Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and the city staff and the council the same, so, thanks very much.
Well, I would like to thank everybody that helped with the holiday tree lighting party, even though it rained like crazy, for some reason, it stopped raining when we lit the tree, which was amazing. We had a great turnout, even though it was a super gloomy day. I met some really wonderful people, and we're gonna start planning next year's party, probably in February, so if anybody wants to help, just let me know. And that's it. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd love to.
Made kinda sorta by Counselor McMahon, is seconded by Counselor Tracy to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM.